The Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education Meeting for December 11th, 2012. This is the tax levy hearing. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher?
Present.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Pandersky?
Here.
Mrs. Rose? Present. Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Wold?
Here. So this is the 2012 Tax Levy Hearing. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold, and I will turn this over to Mr. Alvis.
Thank you. Annually, the Board of Education is asked to consider and adopt a tax levy. A tax levy is a request for property taxes to fund the school year that starts the following July. While the Board can levy or ask for any amount it desires, the amount of revenue actually received is limited by a formula contained in the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. There are two components to that formula. One is the December year-over-year Consumer Price Index number that determines the aggregate allowable increase on existing property, and the other is new construction. But I'm going to talk about the first number for a moment. It's generally referred to as the CPIU, the December-over-December number, and you see the historical values up there. And if you went from 2004 through 2012, that average is out to 2.5 percent a year. The year that we're currently in, that we paid our taxes on this year, the formula increased by 1.5 percent, and the formula for the bills that we'll pay next year will increase by 3. Now recently, in the newspaper, we had what we call a "black box" notice, and the reason we're having the hearing tonight is because we're asking for a levy increase in excess of 5 percent. So that seems strange, because, as I just showed you, the number for next year is 3, but the reason we're asking for an increase over 5 percent is that we have a TIF in the district. A TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing District. For the past 20 years or so, the revenues, the tax revenues generated from that area have gone into a special fund to pay off bonds that paid for the initial infrastructure improvements. Many people don't know that we have a TIF in Lake Forest, but it's an area down near Sunset Foods, McDonald's, the West Side Train Station, the fire station, Everett School. And in the past, we've shown maps of that. But again, at one time, that was just a barren piece of land, and there was an investment in infrastructure, in roads, sewers, utilities, to promote development. And then, the way TIFs work, rather than the revenue from the property taxes generated coming to the taxing bodies, for a period of time, it goes into a special fund to pay off those improvements. That's expiring, and so we increase our levy to capture that. That's called new construction. So I'm going to focus again for a moment on the 3 percent. When I said the aggregate increase on existing property is 3 percent, that means for all of your homes put together, the total increase would be a 3 percent increase. However, Mr. Anderson's house, the increase could be 5 percent. Mr. Schuler's house, it could be 1 percent. Mrs. Rose, it might be 3 percent, and so on down the line. But again, when it's all added together, the aggregate would be 3. What determines that? It determines what happens to your individual property in relationship to all the other properties in the district. I can't get all the districts on here, but what I wanted to show, this is area, school, district tax rates. So if you happen to live in Lake Forest and you are in District 67 and District 115, your tax rate is $2.37 per hundred dollars of assessed value that you paid to the school districts. If you go just south, if you're in Lake Bluff in 115, your tax rate is $3.69. This is for last year. If you go south, 106 and 113 would be in Bannockburn Elementary School District and High School District 113, your tax rate is $4.86. So, and as you go across, you can see Illinois is a very property tax-dependent state. We all pay a lot in property taxes, but in relationship to other districts, we have a relatively low tax rate. Now, conversely, in full disclosure, we do charge a lot in fees in both districts, in 67 and in 115. But when you balance them out, still depending on how long you live in the town, you benefit from a lower tax rate. The other factor is property values in Lake Forest tend to be higher, but I'd like to point something out. Again, if you look at District 67 and 115, and that $2.37 tax rate, and you take a million-dollar house, to pay a similar amount in taxes in Bannockburn, if you move the house there, the value of that house would have to drop to $500,000. So while there are differences in property values from town to town, that would be fairly dramatic. And you go across the board, we're about half of what many other communities are when you add those two districts together. So the tax levy numbers have not changed from the tentative levy that the Board adopted in October. You have to adopt a tentative levy after the conclusion of tonight's hearing and public comment. The Board will be asked to adopt the final levy later in the agenda, and then we have to file that by the last Tuesday in December. With that being Christmas this year, I think we have until Friday, the 21st, to do that. So may I entertain any questions from the Board at this time? Again, nothing's changed from the discussion we had and the numbers that were presented in October. Okay? If there's no questions, then that would conclude the administrative portion of the tax levy hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alvis. And now I would like to ask for any public comment regarding the tax levy. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn from the tax levy hearing?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I. Motion carries. We're adjourned from the hearing. Now, I get to bang the gavel again. I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, December 11th, 2012. We did have an executive session at 5:30 where a discussion of matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body were held. No action was taken. May I have a call to order, please, Madam Clerk? I mean, may I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher?
Present.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Pandersky?
Here.
Mrs. Rose? Present. Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Wold?
Here. Thank you. That brings us to the President's Report, and I had just a couple of very brief items. First of all, we have a very nice, full audience here, and I really want to welcome everyone here on a, finally, a cold December night that's getting close to the holidays. So thank you all for coming. The two things I wanted to mention is, at our last Board meeting, we did pass several policies, one of which was Policy 2140. I just have it here because, just for your reference. But what happened in our policy meeting was that we had discussed that this exhibit, which you were also given a copy of, was so helpful in describing the practicalities of electronic communications between Board members, specifically, really, what we deal with here are emails. And I wanted to, this is for your reference, but specifically, when a Board member is sending out an email, and this is for information purposes only, I will, in the future, and I failed to do this in the past, put on all, any email coming from me, "Board Member Alert: This email is not for interactive discussion purposes. The recipient should not reply to it or forward it to any other individual." So I don't, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, and as much as I value your opinions and like to hear from you all, that we need to do so either in, you know, by adding an item to the agenda of a meeting or by giving me a phone call. So this is just for your reference. Are there any questions?
Has this policy been vetted by our counselor, IAS B. Counselor?
Yes, yes. We adopted the policy last, was it last month's meeting, or it could have been the prior month's? The exhibit, in being consistent with our other policies, we did not adopt the exhibit, but when we met in the policy meeting, decided that it was so helpful in terms of practical information that we wanted to send it out to all Board members. So I'm a bit tardy in getting that out. And then, secondly, the state of Illinois passed a law requiring all Board members to complete the Open Meetings Act training. I'm proud to say I have my certificate, and I believe I have to give this to our Board Clerk. So I know that several of you have completed already, but if you haven't done so, you have got a couple of weeks to do so. And it was really very easy to do the online training, and I don't think there were any surprises there. So I would encourage you to get that done. That concludes the President's Report. And then this brings us to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold, and the audience might appreciate I have something much more exciting to talk about than Opens Meeting Act training or foible emails. We have two things that we'll be celebrating here tonight, and this is a season of giving, and our students are in a position of both receiving and also in giving, and those are the two parts of our presentation for tonight. Spirit grants are things that students benefit from as their teachers apply for them. And each year around the holiday season across our district, various teachers create wish lists in the form of spirit grants, and the teachers wish for things that would enhance the learning, teachers wish for things that would enhance the learning for their students, and we have many grant requests each year. And in late January, the Spirit of 67 begins the process of evaluating and granting those wishes. As our administrative liaison to the spirit, I've asked Director of Special Education, Mrs. Anne Dunn, to share an example of one of the grants that was approved last year.
Thank you, Mr. Simic, and good evening, Board. For the past 10 years, I've had the pleasure of being part of the Spirit of 67 Grant Committee. Each year, I'm amazed at the number of grants that are submitted. These grants are requested by parents, students, teachers, and administrators. Last year, we were able to grant 33 of these grants that were submitted, totaling well over $200,000. These funds are generated by donations, as well as some of the fundraising activities that are provided by the spirit, such as the home tour and the benefit luncheon. Without this support from the Spirit of 67, a lot of the cultural and academic experiences that our children have in District 67 may not be available. Last year, one of the grants that was written was by our science teachers at the elementary schools, Lynn Frank, Denise Cass, and Deana Puglisi. And here tonight with us to explain a little bit more about the grant and their firsthand experience using the materials are our 4th graders, Will Elliott and Maya Stitzlein.
Maya and Will?
Can you imagine being a 2nd grader and being able to see the microscopic details of every stage of metamorphosis as your caterpillar grows and changes into a butterfly? These microscopes are changing the world of science education for District 67 scientists. Thanks to the Spirit of 67, students at Everett are investigating images such as this one in science. Last year, each elementary school received three ProScope microscopes through a Spirit of 67 grant. So, what is a ProScope, and how is this technology being used in the science lab and in the world outside the Everett School doors? ProScopes are handheld teachers, which allows students to store microscopic images for later viewing and analysis. They work by connecting wirelessly with an iPad, so students use them in a variety of ways, including anywhere in the science lab and outside while studying nature. Recently, 2nd graders even used them at Ella Farms to study insects in their natural The ProScopes in the science room are helping out your child's science experience in so many ways. Not only do the images collected grab students' attention, it engages their imagination in learning about the world around them. The ProScopes will promote better scientific observation, scientific drawing, more in-depth discussion, and greater understanding of science concepts. Elementary science teachers have identified many areas of study where the ProScope can enrich your child's science experience. 1st graders are using the ProScopes to study plants and animal habitats. They'll be able to see every vein in a leaf. Here's the comparison from looking at a leaf with your naked eye to using these wonderful machines. As you can see, 2nd graders are using the ProScopes to study insects inside the science lab and at Ella Farms. Last spring, the 3rd graders used the ProScopes in their study of the food chain. Also last spring, the 4th graders used the ProScopes when they studied weathering and erosion in the geology unit. As you can see, these ProScopes are a great addition to the tools and technologies we have available for students at Everett. Remember, these aren't just magnifying glasses to look at an insect's body parts. They're portals into the new generation of learning.
You're hired.
I have a question. Did you say you're in 7th or 8th grade?
So I just have a comment. I was so impressed by the both of you, not only how your excitement about the science, but the way you presented it, and I think you're both fantastic. Thank you for taking time out of your night to come join us.
Will and is it? Is it Maya? Maya and Will, thank you very much. Most of us in this class, in this room here today, do not have the privilege to be present in your classroom. This was the next best thing. So thanks so much for bringing us there, both of you.
And these are the 4th graders' kids. Isn't that amazing? Absolutely amazing. The second part of our Superintendent's Report today is about students giving, and we've already received a good deal from two of our students, and we have other students who are going to be talking about some very important gifts that they were able to give to other students less fortunate than they. Recently, Deer Path students gave service and completed to raise money for philanthropy. Here to introduce our students are Student Council sponsors, Amy Infazan?
Infanzon.
Infanzon, and Mrs. McMahon, and 6th graders, Amanda Goldman and Courtney Smith, and 7th graders, Alexis Shoemaker and Michael Rourke.
Well, thanks so much for having us. On behalf of all of the Student Council sponsors, myself and Katie McMahon on the west side, and also Ken Smith and Sean Weber work with the 5th and 6th grade side of Deer Path. We're really excited to present our most recent project to you. I'll go ahead and let our Student Council members talk a little bit about it. Courtney Schmidt actually was very excited to have the opportunity to come tonight, but unfortunately, she went home sick today from school. But I'll let, let's see, Amanda Goldman is going to start us off with some good information.
Hi, I'm Amanda Goldman, and I'm a 6th grader at Deer Path. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about Association House and what 5th and 6th graders did to help raise money for Association House. Association House of Chicago was established in 1899 and serves as a multicultural community by providing programs such as child welfare, community services, behavioral health, and out-of-school time in both English and Spanish. These programs benefit underprivileged children and families in the Chicago area. To raise money for Association House, 5th and 6th graders were given flyers saying what they could do to earn it. Some ideas include making your bed, washing the dishes, taking out the trash, walking dogs, et cetera. 5th and 6th graders were also given reminders throughout the week before the money was due. Some reminders include pop-ins for classrooms and announcements.
Hi, I'm Alexis Shoemaker, and I'm a 7th grader at Deer Path. And on the 7th and 8th grade side, instead of just bringing in money for it, we do something called Penny Wars, and each homeroom has their own, like, jar to put coins in, and every homeroom competes to see who can raise the most money. And you can put dollar bills in your rival homeroom's teams, and it makes it more fun for fundraising in 7th and 8th grade.
Hi, my name is Michael Rourke. I'm a 7th grader at Deer Path Middle School. I'm going to talk about how much we raised and how many kids we donated to. We raised, both sides, east and west, raised a total of $4,908.62. We took this money and we went to Target to buy about $50 worth of gifts for each kid. We had 76 kids total, and we split up into groups, and we had kids and their ages, so we bought gifts for them according to their age.
So we do have a slideshow of our trip to Target.
We're here. There are three of the 14 students that took our party bus down to Target, and we're really proud of all of the students for all of their fundraising efforts, and especially for the students who were able to enjoy this experience of buying the gifts. They really represented Deer Path well, had a great time shopping for gifts, and made a difference in a lot of families' lives this holiday season. So thank you for letting us share.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alexis, come on back here. I have a question for you. You can't slip away that easily. And also, for Amanda or Michael, if you wouldn't mind answering just a couple of questions and related to your shopping experience. I wondered, what kind of stuff did you get? Do you remember particular things you got for particular children, and why did you pick those? And how did this make you feel?
Well, I had all 6-year-olds, and so for the boys, I wanted to get a variety of things for $50 because I wasn't sure what they liked. And so I got Legos, like, toys, games, and for girls, I got Barbies, things they could draw on. And it felt kind of, it felt good, buying things for other people and leaving Target not with things for me, but like, for kids who I know would enjoy it and who would really, like, look at this as like, a really great experience.
I had 7, 7-year-olds, and I had 16-year-olds. So I know I got some fun things for the, like, 7-year-olds, like, Crayola things to draw with, but then hats and gloves for winter and fun, like, little toys for girls to play with. And then, for the 16-year-olds, I got, well, what a typical 10-year-old would want. We got, like, hair straighteners and fun clothes and massagers for them, mini-hand massagers. And I definitely thought that if I was one of them, I would be very thankful because, I don't know, I'd like to get a hair straightener for Christmas, so...
Well, the kids on my list ranged from 11-years-old to 14. For the 11-year-olds and 12-year-olds, I got, like, Legos and Nerf guns for them. And then, for the, like, 13-year-old girls, we got the little iPod Shuffle. It was exactly the amount, so... And then, the 14-year-olds, I got, like, a video game or a movie, something like that.
Michael, don't run away yet. Important question is, how did that make you feel at the end? And that had to be a very different kind of experience for kids to have that.
Well, like, it felt good because, like, we had 10 shopping carts filled of gifts. I'm like, whoa, these kids, I can't wait, like, it'd be nice to receive all this on Christmas and, like, have all these wonderful presents.
Well, we're really, really proud of you, both for what you've done and who you are, and it's wonderful to see your parents, because I can see on their faces and your teachers too how proud they are of your work and the good job that you did. So, thank you. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
I have to admit, that was much more interesting than the President's Report. This brings us to public participation. I'll let everybody clear out. Thank you so much for coming and making this part of your evening. So this brings us to public participation. Is there any member of the audience who would like to... So, this brings us to public participation. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing none, that brings us to our reports and discussion. It's the annual assessment report. And I think, I think Mr. Simic has, is out in.
I think he's greeting the students.
He's talking to the students.
Good evening, board members. Would you like me to start, or should we wait for Mr. Simic? Okay. Okay, well, our annual assessment report will show, I think, demonstrate to you just how wonderful these students were, because we can see it in the assessment data too, just how engaging and how bright and how wonderful they are. And that can never be, ever be captured in numbers, but to the best of our ability, you'll see that in the report. So, one thing about this report that I want to stress, and it's a theme that will be running through it, is that whenever you hear the term "assessment," between now and I want to say the next three or four years, think of change. It is going to change and evolve, and then change again and change again. So, we are in the midst of probably the greatest amount of change in school history as far as assessments and what's going to be happening with them. It's not only the tests in Illinois, but it's the tests nationally. As a result, in the past, in this report, we've given you a lot of comparisons to previous years. We're not going to do that. We're going to just look at that snapshot in time, and then talk about some of the changes as well. Two of the major assessments that we do in this district, the NWA MAP, as well as ISAT, have some important changes. And Joe and I together will look at what some of those changes are. And again, these changes are going to string out over the next several years. So I think, Joe, you want to talk about NWA?
Okay, good evening. Regarding NWEA, most frequently, we utilize results at the individual level to look at the, kind of what students are learning in reading, math, language arts, as well as how much they're growing over time. And we also look at results at the classroom level, and it helps us to inform our instruction. But the third way that we can use it, and we do this least frequently, but I think it might be interesting to you, is looking at the results from the perspective of more of an aggregated school level and what it might tell us about how we're doing academically. And that's what this graph does, is based on a school study that NWEA produces, and there are now so many different schools and districts utilizing NWEA. Fifty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-seven schools at last count, so it's a very widely-used assessment. Based on that, and based on our mean scores at the school level and at the grade, broken down at the grade level, we get a sense of kind of how that, how that looks compared to other schools in the nation. And you can see it looks quite favorable at each of these grade levels. We're at, you know, the 95th percentile or above. At some like, some grade levels, the 99th, basically meaning that as a whole, our students are achieving at a very, very high level compared to national schools. And actually, the NWA does not provide data at the district level. And if they did, I think it might even be more rarefied to have an entire district achieving it, you know, at such a high level. So, and I think this speaks to a number of things, you know, everything from the outstanding classroom instruction that's in place, as well as the outstanding policymaking that's happening. And then, last but not least, definitely having just a great environment here in Lake Forest in terms of the parent support for learning. So, can't really pinpoint exactly what this is, but it definitely tells us that our students are learning at a very high level. And similarly, in looking at mathematics, you see very, very high positive results again. And these are results that we've seen year after year, but I think it's important just to revisit once a year maybe, just to see, yes, you know, our students are achieving at a very high level in terms of their math and reading achievement. Now, this next piece relates more to research that we conducted internally. As Julie mentioned, change has been a major theme in terms of assessment, and NWEA was no exception to that. They went to an assessment that's aligned to the Common Core, which is curricular change that we're all making, based on national policy at this point. And so we jumped into that. We jumped into the opportunity to use their Common Core-aligned version of the test, which we were enthusiastic about, thinking that it would kind of drive some of our instructional changes. Now, with that though, we heard some concerns. The test, the test items were kind of strange. In some cases, you know, we had second graders who were exposed to Shakespeare-type questions, for example, and the passage length seemed to be really, really long in some cases for younger students. So we heard some concerns as we went to this new test. And the third concern, which is what this graph is going to try to tease out, was, was this, is this test actually truly measuring growth of students in an accurate way? And specifically, it was raised by a couple of different administrators and teachers that it seemed that students who were achieving in the fall at the highest levels were actually not meeting their growth targets as much as students who were achieving at lower levels. So that's what this, this graph was an attempt to visually represent. Is there a relationship between student start point and how much learning that actually happened between fall and spring? And this is just one example of many ways that we sliced the data to look at that. And unfortunately, we did see a very strong relationship where it seemed like students who were beginning in the lower deciles locally, in terms of their performance, were much more likely to hit their growth targets, and then vice versa as you work through. And this is very, very close to a linear relationship, which we don't often see. So it does seem like there was a real relationship between student start point and their likelihood of hitting growth targets, which we took as somewhat concerning, because we've really always looked at the percentage meeting growth targets. And this has caused us to rethink some of our practices. And in the next graph, I'll talk about an implication. So, this is a bit of a summary slide. In terms of the changes to NWA, to MAP tests, the first change was in 2011-12, as I said, we decided to use the NWEA Common Core-aligned test. That was something we voluntarily did, again, thinking that it would be a good move to make. But it is a changed test, as I was mentioning. And then, secondly, NWEA came out with new national norms, so that the same results were now, you know, represented differently in terms of what it meant nationally. And then in 2012-13, the current school year, changes that are currently happening is that there's, nationally, there's a pilot now of non-multiple-choice items. So this is kind of a trend in the assessment world, to try to have standardized assessment items that are actually not multiple choice, which is quite tricky, but quite exciting as well. And we elected not to participate in that national pilot, just based on the amount of change that has been experienced already, but that is being piloted at various schools around the country. And now lastly, and this relates back to that last graph and the concern that we uncovered, we have determined now to make spring testing optional, rather than making it a school-wide thing. Because really, we utilize spring testing a lot for that assessment of growth. And now there's some doubt cast on the validity of that, that measurement, unfortunately. So, thinking that spring testing is no longer a universal requirement, but is something that at the, at the school level, at the grade level, it can be determined on a case-by-case basis if, you know, if it would be valuable to do that testing. And I think, you know, there's pros and cons to that change, but the pro of that is now we'll be freed up for more instructional time to do, to do other more valuable things, so. Okay, I think now we're shifting to Julie.
Right, we're going to talk about ISAT, but before we go on, I would just want to mention that in the scores that did go home last spring, we did take it last spring, the NWA test, parents did, a few called with concern, saying the percentile changed, the growth didn't look like right, and things like that. So those two factors that Joe mentioned were the reasons that some of the score sheets looked odd to parents, and the reason why we're not going to be able to use comparison data. We've asked NWA if they'll change the student charts that are sent home, to have a line or some kind of a marker that shows, here's the old and the new. They haven't said that they would do that. I don't know if they will yet, but in any case, we're, we'll be getting the word out. We've had information about this on our website. Since we made the decision not to spring test, we are going to send a letter home at the time of parent conferences, which is the time that they'd be starting to think about a spring test, to make sure the word gets out a little bit more related to that. And so, now looking at ISAT a little bit, this is a chart you've seen before, where we take some school districts that are around us, that we feel as though we have some point of comparison. And you can see that for the last three years, we've had our highest scores here in district history. So we've been quite proud of that. There are a few districts that are a couple of percentage points higher, which, you know, is nice for them. We've all got great scores, what can I say? I did want to mention this. We hardly ever look at our three K4 buildings, particularly in public. We want to, we think all of our schools are great, and we know that they're all great. But sometimes people will look at these scores, and this came off of the Illinois Interactive Report Card. Any person in the public, you know, have this information available to them if they were to go to the Illinois Interactive Report Card. And you can compare any schools within a district or outside of a district, as many as you like, much like the chart we just had up with multiple schools. So, I, from time to time, will hear that one of our schools is better than the others, or one isn't quite as good, that kind of thing. So as you see, Cherokee does have 97% this year in meeting or exceeding our state's standards, whereas the other two schools had 96. But I just wanted to let you know that at Everett School, that would actually transfer into actual numbers. If three students, actually two, one student's score would change at Everett, and three would need to change at Sheridan, based on the size of the populations and what that would mean. So virtually, we do have three really great schools, and that kind of tempers my remarks about the other districts as well. When we're talking about a percentage point, we're really talking, we would maybe have to have a dozen kids change, or that kind of thing, to have the, equal the scores of those other schools. Not to say that they're all great scores. Now, to get into some of the changes. First of all, adequate yearly performance. We did make adequate yearly performance, which is our state, our state has a benchmark or a cut score that says any districts that make a certain, above a certain amount, make adequate yearly performance. Fewer and fewer districts, particularly high school districts, didn't make that designation this year. In fact, it was quite interesting to see those who did and those who didn't. And because Lake Forest High School did not meet adequate yearly performance. But on the other hand, they outscored districts who made adequate yearly performance by far, in many, many ways. But we, you could look at the high school report if you'd like to see more information on that. But in any case, our state superintendent, just last month, and I believe I put this in your, the paper report, has gone on record saying that he believes this is the end of AYP, that we won't be subjecting ourselves to this kind of flogging, or whatever you'd like to call it, in the future. The other thing, though, in terms of the changes to the ISAT test, and these are really pretty important things, is that the focus on the future national and state assessments through the consortium called PARC is about getting kids college and career-ready. So the word PARC, the acronym for PARC, the CC, is college and career-ready. So ISBE, looking at the different tests, the ISAT versus the Prairie State, the Prairie State has the ACT as part of that test. They said, "We like the rigor for the high school, but we're not as happy with the rigor on ISAT." So their answer to this issue was to say, "We're going to score it differently." So now you're going to have to have a higher score. They're not changing the test so much, or they're going to change it a little bit, and I'll talk about that. But they're going to say, "You have to have a higher score to meet standards, and even a higher yet score to exceed standards." So, I don't know if that will transfer into rigor. It doesn't quite sound like a more rigorous test to me, just based on a benchmark or a cut score. But what will happen this spring, and we'll share this with you as soon as we get it, they're going to actually go back into our spring 2012, and they're going to rescore it. And they're going to say, "According to the new cut scores, is this what you would have got?" So therefore, prepare yourselves, people, because this is changing. So when our next scores come out, you won't be as surprised by the change. So I don't know exactly what that means, but the state does say that it'll be a significant drop. So we'll, I'm sure that relatively, we'll do quite well, but we should expect a drop. Now, the difference on the test, though, one difference that is actual, that we will see in addition to these cut scores, is that 20% of the questions are now going to be aligned with the Common Core standards. I put several examples of questions in your packet, and I thought I would just go over a couple of them today, because you'll see they do vary, and what Joe said about not having multiple-choice questions even on NWA, this will give you a feel for what that might be. This is one of my favorite examples, the vacation rental task. So we've got three women here who want to share the cost of a vacation rental house, and it tells you how the women have decided to split it out. Well, so the question, part A of the question says that Martha is thinking that she'll pay a third of it. Is she correct? So this is a little, a little different than questions might have done that in the past. They might have been a little more straightforward on that, rather than say, "Is she correct? And if so, use math to figure it out." It gets more complicated in that it goes into part B then, and it says, "Now that you know that, go ahead and figure out for each one." So you can see there's multiple layers, multiple levels. This is not a multiple-choice test question at all. I believe this is either, it's a middle school question. Here's a question on the language arts side, I believe it's coming potentially out of third grade. So there'll be a passage about how animals live, and then students will be asked, "What is the main idea of this passage, how animals live?" And it does give them some choices, but the more rigorous portion of the question, they won't come in in part B. And now it says, "Based on what you just answered, which of these statements support what you have decided?" So you can see how these questions are really quite different. And through our change in curriculum, you know, working with the Language Arts Committee, working with math on a continual basis, that, you know, as you know, Andy's been reporting on that. So we believe our students will be at that point prepared for this kind of thing. Coming soon, a couple of things. Five Essential Survey is a survey that was going, is going to be done in our district in the month of February and March, somewhere in that timeframe. It's for grades six and up, six through 12. Where all students potentially can take the survey, all of our faculty, and also, if we choose to, our parents can take the survey as well. We're going to talk about more of that in our next education committee, look at the questions a little bit, and discuss that. And we can come back to you with some more information, but I just wanted you to be aware that that'll be coming. We also have a completely redesigned school-state report card, and I'm actually going to show you that on the document camera in just a minute. But I wanted to end the report with what some would suggest is good news. I believe it is. The ACT score for the class of 2013 at Lake Forest High School was the highest. Again, it seems we keep breaking our own records there, and in fact, we did, with a composite score of 26.9, which is, on average, just so remarkable. So, we asked Thor at the high school to break out the Deer Path Middle School students compared with the non-Dear Path Middle School students. And I want you to note that Thor thought this was quite important to mention. Your nationally-recognized average ACT backs out any students who had accommodations. He's not able to do that when he, he can't tell who got accommodations when he sorts through the data. So these scores actually include the students who have accommodations, and you can see the Deer Path students actually meet the average, even if with the students with accommodations in the test. I just, the one that pops out the most to be, to me, is this one. And I know that we're quite proud of our math program and our exposure to algebra for all, and an actual, the mastery of algebra for many, many students in eighth grade. And it seems to really, you know, show up on this test. So I think, I'd like to just, oh, it says "Wow" in case you can't read that. Again, quite remarkable if you, if you appreciate ACT. I think the things we saw in this room tonight, to me, I would value more than I would value the ACT. But on the other hand, we are judged by these things as well. So I'm going to allow time for questions in just a minute, but I'm going to show you really quickly, I think, the report card. So I think that they've took a view of this to modernize it quite a bit. But there is not only a much more modern look to it, but there's going to be a lot of new information. This top information is similar to things that were on there before, the breakdown of class size and teaching experience and a variety of things. It starts to change a little bit as we look at the curriculum and resource information. On that, there's some comparisons that we've never seen before, such as, in our case, we'll have world language teachers and a variety of other things, so we'll be able to compare that school to school. It actually does even show the languages that are taught. Oh, sorry if that bothered you. This section, again, brand-new from the principal. The principal's going to be, have the opportunity to enter some information about extracurricular activities, awards received, and so on. So that'll be, again, posted on the Illinois Interactive Report Card. People can compare from school to school and this type of thing. But I think it'll be a nice point of pride that we'll be able to have some. be a nice point of pride that we'll be able to have some information like that. Page two, then, of the report, we'll start to get in some of the assessment data, but new is this section right in here, where it gives our performance, and I'm sure the page will be, the report will actually be many pages long, because they probably will continue to break it out grade by grade, but right next to where our score is, in this section here, it actually gives you a comparison to what they call similar schools. I don't know how they're going to create that demographic, or how, you know, what demographics they're going to choose, but they're going to give you a range of similar schools, as well as then the Illinois average. And I think that that will be helpful to us, because we very rarely look at the Illinois average as an appropriate comparison, so that should be kind of interesting. And then there's also a kind of historical view on that. The last section is potentially the most interesting section. It's going to be some information about, from our new teacher evaluation system is going to be included on this, as well as other information about our teachers and about how long they've been in the district, master degrees and things like that. Student absences are included here, and in that second section, you can see that it has teacher qualifications, and it's actually going to say what number of your teachers, how they, how they were evaluated, what they're, what we found through the evaluation process. So a lot of quite different things on that report. I believe that that should be available, you know, based on our spring testing, and as we roll up information to them before July 1 or thereabouts, and so I'm not sure exactly when we'll see that, but you can look forward to a new kind of interesting report. Any questions about the assessment report?
Yeah, Julia, I have a question. Historically, individual teachers make recommendations for students in the spring, based on classroom performance, based on their own personal recommendation about where they feel these students should be properly placed. But heavily weighted to have always been the NWA assessments in placing kids for the future year. In this time of, that we're sort of in the middle, we don't have PARC coming right yet, the NWA is optional this year, do you see an additional component coming into place for teachers to place kids?
Well, I know that the Gifted Program has been discussing that, and they are going to add additional items to their rubric in terms of performance tasks. They will do a second, they will do a spring NWA if they think it will be helpful, so there is that option available. We'll be in discussions, like from fourth grade up into middle school and things like that. Maybe the fourth grade teachers will say, "I can't do that without the spring test," and that would be a circumstance where they're not using it to look at growth, they're looking at it for a snapshot in time, basically for the placement purposes. We've actually got that on our agenda to discuss as a leadership team, and then we'll be taking that into the schools to have greater discussion about that. We will have a test window open, it won't be difficult to give the test, so we want to do it where it makes sense, but not just across the board.
I think this was a point that Joe made earlier about high-performing students coming in at the beginning of the year. We tend to see less growth in the spring, and that was something that came up in the data. I was just wondering if you could share with us, if it's been formulated yet, how the district plans to use that data going forward.
Yeah, part of, part of the use of that data was actually, it did go into our decision-making as far as whether or not we should, we should do a universal spring assessment, and we determined, I'd say largely because of that data, that it was not wise to do that, you know, to be spending so much time with the students, reassessing them, based on, you know, our reasoning, going into this year, our reasoning was that it would allow us to really look at student growth, but when we started to cast doubt on the validity of that growth measurement, then it became a question of whether we should do the spring assessment window. So that's the, that's probably the biggest reason, or the biggest example I can give you of how we utilize that, that research data, as far as it helped us to make that decision about whether or not to test in the spring. Beyond that, I think, you know, it just definitely, you know, this is data that we were just kind of, or it was based on issues that were brought to us, and it was a chance for us to just kind of empirically look at whether those, whether they were perceptions, or whether it was really true, you know, some of the concerns. So it was just, you know, kind of a study that we conducted based on the concerns that we had been hearing.
I would like to add to that, too, that I, just today, when I was putting together, finishing touches on my thoughts for tonight, found a study that someone, a researcher out of Colorado State did, using NWA scores on gifted population and their growth, and she found the exact same thing, that that population hadn't grown. And it's not that the students don't grow, they just don't show growth on this measure. We're quite certain that with our rich curriculum and the experiences that our students have, that they're vastly different at the end of the year than they are in the beginning. If we brought these same youngsters back, you would see that, too. As incredible as it sounds, they're going to, you know, learn a lot of experiences, too, so I think that that's the main thing, is it's hard. And I, we are going to have to be very careful in these years ahead, because we are unique as a school district. You don't get to the 99th percentile or 98th percentile as a school and think that other, you know, assessments, the average assessment is going to suit you. So we're going to be very creative about that, and I know we're spending a lot of time in meetings talking about how much time we will invest on making sure we get that right, to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
Oh, I want, one other thing is that the report that we've referred to in this presentation isn't in your packet, it'll be in your packet. We're going to have a second set of reports that we won't do orally, but they'll be put into your packets, and we'll put them up on the website, any of the research that Joe has done this year.
I have just a question. Given all these changes to the test, and what you are anticipating, what's your opinion about where these tests are headed? Are you hopeful, are you discouraged?
I'm hopeful in many respects, because the questions we saw are great questions. Less hopeful, perhaps, about the scoring or the ability to show true growth on them, but I think they are a step forward. I think the Common Core standards are wonderful. I think that we're well poised to incorporate them all into our instruction, you've heard Andy say that before. So it's going to take some tweaking, though, we're not going to, I think, feel really comfortable with it for quite some time.
And I would add to that, also hopeful, and I, but I think our environment, our student population is very, very different from the norm, as, you know, some of the data that we shared today showed, and that, that actually presents some issues for measurement. For, you know, for, for example, for NWA, I think they're, they kind of run out of items sometimes when students are getting right, 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 you know, right answer after right answer, and so there are some kind of measurement issues. So I'm a little bit, you know, skeptical, hopeful but skeptical, you know, as far as how, how well they'll be able to do with some of these new assessments, especially in districts such as ours.
Thank you. That was very informative. Ready to go on?
This brings us to our Board Committee reports. First, the Board of Education Committee, Leslie Fisher, Bill Anderson, and Rick Schuler.
The Education Committee has not met since our last board meeting, but I do want to reiterate that the preview of the annual assessment report was brought to us by Dr. Cooley and by Dr. Henrickson, and that we did look at length at the Illinois State Report Card, so thank you.
Then the Board Finance and Operations Committee, Lori Rose, John Julian, and Jeff Pendersky.
We have not had a, right, Jeff? Joint Operations Finance Meeting since our last board meeting.
Thank you. Our Liaison Reports, the North Suburban Special Education District, Lori Rose.
There's not been a meeting of the North Suburban Special Education District. Next one is scheduled for January.
Thank you, Lori. The Illinois Association of School Boards, and Ed Redd, Bill Anderson.
There is no report this month.
The Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Lori Rose.
Like the other committees, the Curriculum Coordinating Committee has not met this month. The next scheduled meeting is February 7, 2013, and we will present a report following that meeting.
And the Spirit of 67 Foundation had their holiday brunch this morning. I know that a number of people attended from the administration, and I've been told it was quite lovely. Unfortunately, I inherited a car issue and was not able to attend. And then, were there any other committee meetings that a board member wanted to report on? Seeing none, it brings us to our action items, and the first action item is the adoption of the 2012 tax levy. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wolt. And Mr. Albus, do you have anything additional to add at this time? And with that, Mrs. Wolt?
May I have a motion to adopt the 2012 tax levy?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. The approval of the IMRF ERI payment. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wolt, and again, I'll look to Mr. Albus.
In February of 2011, the City Council authorized an IMRF, which stands for Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Early Retirement Incentive Program, that was to be offered to city employees. Because of our unique arrangement with the city, we fall under their umbrella, and we did some checking with legal counsel, but if the city decided to offer it, then our employees also were allowed to avail themselves of their program. Six employees from District 67 elected to participate. Now, IMRF is the healthiest pension fund in the state because of the formulas used and their actuarial calculations that go into what the liabilities are when somebody retires. So in a program like this, those employees, there was a liability of $549,296. IMRF normally will amortize that over a 10-year period, but in doing so, charges seven and a half percent interest rate per year, which historically is their assumed investment rate return, so that's, that's where they get the tie. But like a house loan, they backload it, so in the beginning, you're not paying down much principal till the last few years. So a month or so ago, city staff contacted us and asked if we would have any interest in paying down a portion or all of that liability. The liability on the city side is much higher, but by doing so, it will reduce the future interest charges to Lake Forest taxpayers by $2.1 million. Of that $2.1 million, $268,000 would be savings to District 67 taxpayers. So we took that concept to the Finance and Operations Committee when we met a few weeks ago, and I think pretty strongly, people recognize the value in paying that down right now, recognizing that we're earning about 35 basis points on our invested funds. So the City Council, I believe, has already passed this on their end, and with your concurrence tonight, then, we would make that payment before December 31, which will help our rates for next year. Attached to the memo are some breakouts prepared by the city that show some of the numbers that I had shown, but if you go through, you can see who the employees are, and what the, how the rates were calculated. But we strongly recommend that we approve this.
Any questions, board members? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Simic?
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to point out was, I had a meeting with the city administrators two weeks ago, and their business person there was quick to point out how appreciative they were, and what a prudent financial decision she believed this is, and just wanted to, again, extend their appreciation for our school boards' cooperation with them to save the residents so much money on this, on this issue.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the IMRF ERI payment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Then this brings us to the approval of human resources items, including hiring, resignations, terminations, medical and family leave absence, and change in status. May I, I want to make sure that's the, may I have a motion to approve the human resource items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement, the approval of minutes of an executive session on November 27, 2012, and a regular meeting on November 27, 2012. With the disposal of audio recordings, there are none. Is there any item that a board member would like removed for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye. Motion carries. This brings us to FOIA requests, there were none. Announcements, Monday, December 24 through January 4, winter break. Monday, January 27, 2013, school reopens. Tuesday, January 22, 2013, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM here at Lake Forest High School West Campus. I would like to remind board members that we do have a meeting here tomorrow, and a very brief board meeting followed by a workshop, together with District 115. Oh, we had one FOIA. Oh. Uh-huh, we did have one FOIA request, I stand corrected, from Michael Beecham, on 630 Meadowwood Drive in Lake Forest.
Julia, just one brief correction, I think, also, our winter break, I believe, starts the 21st. It's in our agenda, it's the 24th, but I think we're all hoping for the 21st.
Yes, I think you're right. Yes, Friday, the 21st. Thank you for that correction. We have school on the 21st. Right, so Monday, the 24th, is the first day of the winter break. Okay, little bit of clarification there. Okay, now, I think we're ready to adjourn unless somebody else needs to correct me. Seeing, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Needing adjourned.